Our candidate's speech is now open for soon to be adopted. Y'all go by grievous president of the House. All you have in business, come forward, you shall be heard. May God bless this great state, county, and nation. Mr. McClanahan, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Yes, let us bow our heads, please. Most gracious and heavenly Father, for bringing us here tonight, thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us today. They are all so very much appreciated. Thank you for this beautiful fall day we've had. Your blessings are perfect. Please forgive us of our sins, and tonight, may your words of peace and love guide us to do your will. These things I ask in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Ms. Waves, now lead us in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would check yourself on, please, and saw.
I've got mine, wouldn't agree with you.
Ms. Wilson, can we get roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Coleman?
Here, ma'am.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mr. Daniel?
Here, ma'am.
Mr. Jerry Hooper?
Here, ma'am.
Mr. Ricky Hooper?
Here.
Mr. Hunt?
Here.
Mr. Hurt?
Here.
Ms. McClanahan?
Here.
Mr. Malone?
Here.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Rochelle?
Here.
Mr. Tidwell?
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
We have 14 of 14 members present.
Has everyone had a chance to review the previous minutes?
Make a motion.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. I'll just start out by saying welcome. It's pretty awesome to see everybody here. We need to have things like this happen more often, I guess, if that's what it takes to get everybody to come into the meetings. We have an important night tonight, um... with an election of a school board member, and, um, you know, without delaying that, we're gonna get right into that. So, this is a result of Mr. Lawrence Smith retiring from the school board. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped right ahead. I went faster than I meant to. I'll open the floor at this time to citizens' petitions or grievances. If anybody would like to be heard, you're welcome to stand up and address this committee. Yes, sir.
I would need to come up there.
Please come forward, if you don't mind.
Well, some of y'all know me here. My name is Derek Drew. I live down there in...
Yeah, I was gonna say, make sure I told them.
There we go. Name's Derek Drew. I live down there on Baptist Branch Road in McEwen, county part of McEwen, anyway. Some of y'all may know me. I don't normally come to these kind of things, but my biggest concern, which I suspect some people are here for this as well, is we got notice that today, they're supposed to be closing Poplar Grove Road down for three months. And I've got a little printout, I didn't, you know, I only made a few, but y'all are welcome to pass them around, take a look at them. That little red area there is the area that I live in, and, um, basically, we are cut off from the county, except for two ways in and out, once that road close. You know, we do have the bypass that goes over Bull Springs Road, but you can't really count on that. You know, we haven't had a rainy season, so it stayed open, and that's been great, but, you know, it's not really meant for anything more than passenger cars, and when the rains come, it's gonna wash out again. That's not gonna leave us an option. And, you know, if the rains don't come, which pray to God they do, we need the rain. But if it stays dry like this, my other concern is, you know, if, God forbid, there's a brush fire. Our fire department's on the other side of the, where they're proposing the closure, so that whole little area is gonna be susceptible to fire and not have the protection we need. We'll have to wait for somebody to come from McEwen, for somebody to come from Waverly. Um, you know, our post office is in McEwen. This is just another thing. It's like, you know, if that bypass washes out, then what do I have to do? I have to go down to the highway or go out Stewart Branch Road and go in through Waverly to go get my mail at the post office. You know, I've got people that work in Dixon, so, you know, with the price of gas and, you know, it's on the way back up again, you know, they're gonna have to go down on the highway to get, you know, to Dixon, where they work, North Dixon. So, there's just so many problems about this, and, you know, I didn't wanna come here and just complain and say, "Well, you know..." I mean, in my opinion, I don't understand, my feeling is, is that they should give one road open before they close another road. Open that, get that bridge, make that a priority. They're already rebuilding the bridge to Pine Island down in Florida, by the way. That was just Hurricane Ian, you know, a week ago, and they're already working on rebuilding that. That bridge has been sitting there for over a year, and I'm just, I'm saying to myself, why don't they make that a priority before they go close another road, which is needing repair, yes, but still functional? And, you know, my only suggestion would be, if that's a must-do, if they have to do it that way, and I understand, like I said, I don't wanna be a complainer, but I would suggest, for safety's sake, and for the people that live in that little community, maybe they could leave it open, one lane to local traffic only, something of that nature, you know, something of that nature, where, you know, emergency vehicles can get through if they have to, you know, the sheriff's department, the fire department, and where local folks can still make passage through there. I know there's a bridge that has to be worked on, rebuilt, but, you know, they just did it on 70. They've got that stoplight up there, and it's a pain in the butt for everybody that gets to it, but you could still cross 70, where they've been working on a bridge. So, anyway, those are my concerns. That's what kinda drew me out here tonight. Normally, and I apologize for my messy hair, you know, you don't hardly ever see me without a ball cap. I came right from work, and some of my hair is a mess, and I feel very embarrassed to be up here with my ball cap off. But, you know, I'm trying to, trying to respect the place. So, anyway, that's all I got. Thank y'all.
Would any of the commissioners like to address this?
Yes, uh, I spoke with Mr. Drew outside, but, uh, I spoke with Mr. Woods this, today, this morning, about this. I've had several calls about this, and, uh, out of necessity, the bridge needs to be closed, and it was closed, I'm assuming, today. Hopefully, it won't take three months. They allotted that time. They didn't wanna say one month, and it'd take two, but, uh, FEMA has not approved the county putting a crossing there through the creek, and will not pay for it, and, uh, the contractor did not put a crossing in the bid. So, as far as it goes right now, there's no way to put a crossing there, and that's, geographically or topography-wise, I'm not sure that's an option either. But, uh, that's where we stand. I'm not speaking for Mr. Woods, but I'm just going by our conversation today.
Sir, this is the first that I've heard about this one being closed, as far as today. I do know that there's a sequence on their engineering phases and what's left for contracts, so, uh, you know, sometimes it's, it might not be the ideal situation, but I'll be happy to inquire about this, not making any promises, because I actually have no control over that. But I would be happy to look into it and see if there's anything possible that could be done.
I appreciate it. I just, I wanted to raise a concern, 'cause I think that, you know, we're just a small part of the county, and I don't, I don't think, you know, the majority of the county realizes how our little neighborhood has kinda affected, how we're cut off from everybody down in there.
Yes, sir. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the board? Thank you. I'll go back to where I left off. Thank you. As a result of Mr. Lawrence Smith retiring from the school board, we now have an opening for a board seat representing the 5th District. We'll now open the floor to nominations by our commissioners for nominees to serve on the Humphreys County School Board, 5th District, and I would like to say, and I've confirmed this personally, and I will announce to y'all, Mr. Ken Wallace has expressed his desire to not be nominated and is not going to serve on this term. So, that's, that's one name that does not need to be nominated this evening. With that being said, I'll open the floor to nominations.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Phillips.
I would like to place for this school board appointment, Dr. Amber Bradley Wilson. Amber is a graduate of our school system, and she has children who are in school now. I think she would make a wonderful commissioner, a school board member, and she, she has a vested interest with the children, with her own children being in school now, and I would encourage everybody to seriously consider voting for her.
Thank you. Do I hear any additional nominations?
I'm Nate Brad Crawford.
Do we have any other nominations? If we have all nominations, do I have a motion to close nominations?
Let the motion.
Mr. Rochelle. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wagner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nominations are now closed. I would like to extend an invitation for each candidate to come forward to the podium for an opportunity to address the legislative body and answer any questions that they may have. Ms. Amber Wilson, I'll call on you first, if you'd like to come up to the podium. Thank you.
Of course, my name is Amber Bradley Wilson. I've, after hearing about the vacant spot on the school board, I had a long talk with my husband, 'cause I don't do anything without his, you know, talk input. And so, we talked and we prayed about it for several days, thinking about whether this is something that I would be interested in doing, and we both felt that with our three young children currently in the school system, that I would have a vested interest in representing the school board here, and wanting to see that all our kids, you know, succeed here in Humphreys County. If elected, I do promise that I will work and put my top priority, the teachers, the students, and the staff here in Humphreys County. It's a critical time here in education for Humphreys County, with the high school in McEwen being built and the temporary school here in Waverly. They both need to be addressed and completed as soon as possible. We need to utilize the resources that we have responsibly, without having to put an additional burden on our taxpayers. With my education background, background, and my work background, I do feel as if I have qualifications that would help our school system. I want to thank each of you for your time tonight and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll remain, I'd like to ask if any of the commissioners have questions for Ms. No questions, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I get most of you know me, Brad Crawford. I was recently elected in 2018 to District 3, and my wife and I had a change of plans. We sold our place and moved to District 5. I only got served two years of that term, unfortunately. Right as I was stepping down, we had the flood in Humphreys County, one month after, after I resigned. The school board superintendent had done a tremendous job with what they faced. We've got lots more to go. I was a part of that on the front end of the McEwen School, and now the other's been thrown on. And the opportunity in front of me to finish out what I started, I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Thank you, sir. We will vote by roll call, with each commissioner naming the candidate of their choice. To receive an appointment, a nominee must receive the votes of the majority of the members of the county legislative body eligible to vote. We do have a full forum this evening, so it will take account of eight votes for the nomination.
13, 13. 13, that's right.
Are we missing one? Oh!
Two, two votes out.
Okay, it still takes eight votes of the eligible voters, so, just so, just so you know. Ms. Wilson, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Coleman? Mr. Curtis?
Mr. Coleman.
Mr. Daniel?
Amber Wilson.
Mr. Hooper? Mr. Ricky Hooper?
Crawford.
Sorry, I didn't say that before. Mr. Hunt? Mr. Hurt? Ms. McClanahan? Mr. Malone? Mr. Mayberry? Ms. Phillips?
Uh, Dr. Wilson.
Mr. Rochelle? Mr. Wagner? I have eight for Wilson, five for Crawford.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. We now have a majority of the vote going to Ms. Wilson. The motion carries, and Ms. Wilson's declared the school board appointee representing the 5th District of Humphreys County School Board. Congratulations to you, ma'am. I know that you'll do a great job. And I'll just add, thank you to both of you. I know it's a, it's a service that you're giving, and I feel like both of you would have made excellent candidates, and we really appreciate what you're doing. Moving on to the resolutions. The first resolution is to opt out of the building code. This resolution is being voted upon because state law specifically states that each resolution to opt out of building codes automatically expires 180 days following the date of an election for the local legislative body. The resolution requires a two-third majority of eligible voters to pass. For clarity, a yes vote tonight is in favor of opting out of the building code requirement, and a no vote is in favor of not opting out of the building code requirements. Does anyone have any questions about that? On the, on the rules, on the, on the voting of the yes or the no? Is everybody clear? Mr. Ricky Hooper?
Yes. This was brought before the administrative committee. We had some speakers from the state here that explained their services that they could offer, and they gave a presentation, and we voted to move it on to the full commission. Do you have anything to add?
Is there any more discussion on this subject? Hearing no more discussion without objection, I'll call for a vote. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Wilson.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jerry Hooper?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ricky Hooper?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. McClanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
We have all ayes, all yeses.
Very well, thank you. With that, the resolution is adopted. We have opted out of the building code requirement. The next resolution is authorizing certain tax relief to low-income and to totally disabled resident taxpayers for the calendar year of 2022. Mr. Ricky Hooper?
Yes, this was brought before the administrative committee, discussed, and, uh, we've, we've done it every year to help out our, our older citizens, and it was passed to move on to the full commission.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing no more discussion without objection, I'll call for a roll call vote. Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Coleman?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jerry Hooper?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ricky Hooper?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. McClanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
We have all ayes.
Very good. The resolution is adopted. The next resolution is an FAA American Rescue Plan Act for the airports. This is a resolution accepting an award of a monetary grant of $22,000 under the FAA American Rescue Plan Act, funding for airports to assist the county in its participation in such program. Mr. Ricky Hooper?
Yes, this was brought before the administrative committee, discussed, and voted on to move on to this meeting.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing no more discussion without objection, I will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This motion carries. The next resolution is a Solid Waste Board appointments. This resolution accepts the nomination of Mr. Danny Wagner and Mr. Van Malone to the county solid waste board. These appointments are required to fill the positions currently held by Mr. Eddie Rochelle and Mr. Frank Rushton, whose terms expire October 31st. Mr. Ricky Hooper?
These names were brought before the administrative committee with all ayes to pass on to this committee, this meeting.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing no more discussion without objection, I will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The nominations are accepted. The next resolution is air med care network contract for $9,750. This resolution approves the enrollment of all county employees in the air med care network. This comes at a cost of $65 per employee, with an average of 150 employees that would bring the county expense at approximately $9,750. Mr. Ricky Hooper?
Yes, this was brought before the administrative committee, discussed, and passed on to this meeting tonight.
Is there any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, you did say all county employees.
All county employees.
Mr. Chairman, did this include commissioners as well, or not?
Commissioners are considered part-time employees. By doing the slot enrollment, the, the cost is 65 per employee, not 60. That's the other plan, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, what was discussed was, was part-time and full-time employees.
I just wanted to verify that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it didn't break until, what, 500?
500 was the break, yes, sir.
It had to have been $10 cheaper.
Any other questions?
Got too many calls today.
Hearing no more discussion without objection, I will call for a roll call vote. Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Coleman?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Curtis?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jerry Hooper?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Ricky Hooper?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hunt?
No.
Mr. Hurt? Mr. Malone?
Yes.
You skipped me.
I'm coming right back. I realize I did.
Right after him.
I'm sorry. Ms. McClanahan?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Mayberry?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
And Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
We have three no's and 10 yeses.
Thank you. That meets the requirement. This resolution is adopted. The next item is an assistance grant to the firefighters. This resolution accepts an award of a monetary grant of $350,000 from and authorizing a contract with Federal Emergency Management Agency, Department of Homeland Security. The grant is to be utilized by the firefighters for the purchase of a new fire truck. The county is obligated to a 5% match of this grant for the amount of $16,666.67. Mr. Ricky Hooper?
This was brought before the administrative committee. All the money was discussed, and it was voted on to pass on to this meeting.
Is there any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, you said fire truck. Is it a fire truck or a tanker truck?
Tanker.
It was specifically spelled out as a tanker truck. Any other questions? Hearing no more discussion without objection, I will call for a roll call vote. Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Coleman?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jerry Hooper?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ricky Hooper?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. McClanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
We have all ayes.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted. The next item is a general sessions budget transfer. This resolution transfers $12,501 from the account 53300. This resolution transfers $12,501 from the account 53300, line item number 307, entitled Communications, to line item number 189, entitled Other Salaries and Wages. Mr. Ricky Hooper?
Yes, this was brought before the administrative committee, explained, and voted on to move to the full meeting tonight.
Is there any more discussion?
Uh, no new money, Mr. Chairman.
That's correct. No new money. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution is adopted. The next item is School Board Budget Amendments and Appropriations. This is a resolution allowing account transfers and appropriation for the general purpose school fund. The budget amendment accepts a grant from the Tennessee Community Foundation of Middle Tennessee in the amount of $140,206.17 to provide support for salary and benefits for social, emotional learning liaison this year and next year. The second part is an amendment to put $20,000 in funds donated by TVA, Hood, and Camoors for flood recovery from fiscal year 2022 to fiscal year 2023 to disperse to the two schools for teachers' needs. Mr. Ricky Hooper?
Yes, this was brought before the administrative committee, explained by Mr. Rye, and passed to move on to the full meeting tonight.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing no more discussion and without objection, I will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This resolution carries. The next item is election of notaries. This resolution accepts the election of one new notary public nominated by the county commissioners and the renewal of three notary public as submitted. Mr. Ricky Hooper?
Yes, these names were brought before the administrative committee, discussed, and voted on to pass on to this meeting tonight.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing no more discussion without objection, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Appointments for the notary public are hereby accepted. Do we have any other business to discuss this evening? That said, do we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.